Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The board is coming back from a brief recess. The next item on our agenda, we have regulations for an eco toilet exemption. Mr. Suso, where do we want to start with this?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the board will recall, one remaining loose end regarding the Long Pond Sewer System proposed, which of course will be on the ballot as part of the overall wastewater upgrade tomorrow, relates to regulations for eco toilet exemptions. And that took a special process through the legislature to allow the board to consider that. What remains to be done is to set regulations for implementing that. That is a process that's going to take more than a single step. We just recently had confirmation that the board could establish those regulations for future exemptions from the wastewater betterment in the Long Pond area. We transmitted some information from our wastewater superintendent, Jerry Batamis, and, I'm sorry, Little Pond, I misspoke, thank you, and not Long Pond, that's our water source, forgive me. Only 9:10 and I'm already getting my Ls confused. But regarding the Little Pond wastewater area, that would be soured if we get an affirmative vote tomorrow. This eco toilet exemption, the special legislation was just recently affirmed, so this could not have been acted upon to set regulations by this board in advance. And again, we received some information from our wastewater superintendent, Mr. Batamis, also from town council, Frank Duffy, and DPW director Ray Jack. And I would just invite Frank and/or Jerry, preferably Frank, to make some comments outlining some general statements the board can make this evening as to intent. Again, as a reminder, our meeting one week ago, which, our informational meeting, which we were pleased to hold at the board's behest with the Little Pond neighbors spoke about the eco toilet exemption and that possibility. So I know the board wanted to address that to the extent you were able to tonight, to send out a message of your intentions to establish regulations. But that again is a multi-step process. So if town council could make some additional comments on that, and we invite the board's questions and whatever statements you care to make.
Chairman, the town manager has asked me to look into the process that will be undertaken to adopt regulations to comply with the special legislation. This is something the next Board of Selectmen will have as one of their earlier tasks. There was an act passed by the legislature, Chapter 73 of the Acts in 2014, which was in response to a town meeting vote that we passed. We forwarded it on to our representatives in the State House, Mr. Viera and Mr. Madden, and they filed the bill and it was ultimately passed. The Chapter 73 provides that the Board of Selectmen may grant exemptions for future sewer connections and from betterment fees to homeowners or businesses who participate in an eco toilet demonstration project. An eco toilet demonstration project is something our Water Quality Management Committee worked on, and they incorporated it into their final plan for the water quality. Eco toilets are composting toilets and urine diverting toilets. Those are the two kinds that are permitted under the program. Now, the act was passed on April 14, 2014, and it says, and I'm going to quote, "The Board of Selectmen shall adopt regulations within 120 days to carry out the provisions of this section." My calculation of 120 days from April 14th brings us up to August 12th, 2014. But of course, something should be done and on the record before August 12th. There's no reason to wait to the end. We don't have to and we shouldn't. The regulations will have to address a number of issues. One, they will have to define the demonstration project and also identify if there's a limit on the number of participants that are allowed. They'll have to identify the requirements for homeowners or businesses who wish to participate in the demonstration project. Also, the Board of Health will be involved in this process because it is up to the Board of Health to set up a monitoring and inspection program to monitor and inspect the eco toilets that are installed in homes and businesses. The Board of Health also has the right to set a fee for their monitoring services, so they will have to take a separate vote on this to be incorporated into these regulations. Finally, this Board of Health monitoring and inspection program has to be submitted to and approved by the Mass Department of Environmental Protection. So all of these things have to be done before you get the final draft, which all has to be done before August 14th, so we've got to get on this pretty quickly. Finally, the last thing that we have to do is prepare a project participation agreement. And by that, I mean a contract between the Town of Falmouth and the homeowner or business owner who elects to participate in the eco toilet demonstration project. And this will be a very simple document, just basically a page or two saying, okay, here's what the project is, here's the authority for it, here are the responsibilities of the homeowner, here are the responsibilities of the town. And if you sign a demonstration project agreement and you go ahead and install the eco toilets, then per the regulations, the Board of Selectmen can grant an exemption for future sewer connection fees and for betterment fees. Now, we don't know what's going to happen tomorrow, but if it passes tomorrow, we certainly got to go ahead with this. But even if it doesn't, we should go ahead anyways because the legislation says we only have 120 days from August, April 14th to do this. So if the sewers ever come back up for another vote at a later time, this should be in place anyway. So this is something that we really have to do. In order to get this accomplished, the town manager will put together some kind of a committee or working group, which will consist of a member of the Board of Health, somebody from the wastewater department, somebody from the building department, probably the plumbing inspector, somebody from the Water Quality Management Committee, and someone from my office, and maybe other people that they may want to add to come up with, to get the, well, one, to get the process underway, and two, to come up with some regulations that the Board of Selectmen will adopt at a future date.
Questions?
Two items. One is, we also need to put a deadline as to when they have to sign up, so we know how many opt-outs there are going to be to be able to calculate the sewer equivalent betterments.
Right. That's something that will have to go in there, sure.
The second thing, I would encourage us that we vote tonight that we are planning to adopt this policy. And I'm not sure whether that can hold the next group, but I just think it's important for the town to know that the Board of Selectmen is planning on supporting this and moving forward with it before they vote at the town ballot tomorrow.
Ms. Muffet.
Could you explain to me each time you use the word demonstration?
Well, the reason is that, my understanding of it is, if you elect to put eco toilets in your house, they're going to be periodically monitored, and the benefit that's achieved for the community from these is going to be recorded and put in a final report.
Okay, okay. So once they agree, they actually put all of the material in the house?
Yes.
Has it ever been that you could do both?
No, I don't believe you can do both.
You can't have the sewer and some bathrooms?
You've got to make, oh, you've got to elect one or the other. But at some point, there is a provision in the Act that anybody wanting to back out can back out, and they then connect to the sewer and they get charged a betterment, but they have to pay all of the payments that they have missed. You can do both, you just aren't taking advantage of the opting out.
But the only downside about the betterment is when they pay it in, those folks in the affected area don't get the advantage of the betterment, it comes to the town. So there's a flaw in the system there. I mean, in other words, if they opt out, the betterment is already set. The betterment never gets adjusted. That money just comes into the town and into the general fund.
It's a very small percentage we're talking about.
Yeah, I know it is, but I'm just making that comment. People need to be aware of that.
If you have hundreds of people on betterments and only if you opt out, it's, yes, there will be a difference, but it won't be hopefully much.
Excuse me, I think at the meeting that we had at G Ticket, they said there were six homes.
I haven't heard how many.
I think that was what they reported.
In all the town.
In the whole town.
Well.
No, one was saying that they were in.
But understand also, we haven't enacted the regulations yet, and so folks may not be willing to step into this without seeing exactly what the regulations are and what it is that they can expect. So this is an important thing, and Mr. Jones, I agree with you, I think we can take a vote and establish a policy, and especially if Mr. Duffy can suggest a deadline at which time that these regulations could be ready for the board, we could make that motion to say that the board intends to enact regulations by a certain date in order so that the, you know, the townspeople know what the demonstration project will entail. And it then becomes in effect policy that binds the next board until they act on it or change it, or rescind it, excuse me.
I would suggest the last meeting of this board in the month of July would be at least two weeks before the deadline.
So before the end of July, then?
Well, be presented, be prepared for a final vote by your last meeting in July.
Okay. Do we?
I don't know what day it is.
But we may want to have a little bit of time so that it can be on the agenda for public discussion, so.
No, that, I think by that I meant for a final vote.
Right.
I'm assuming that your public discussion will be over by that.
So have a draft set of regulations by July 15? Is that reasonable to?
Yeah, except there's a couple of, I'm not really sure what happens July 4th week. I don't know how many times you're going to meet, but my, I would kind of look to have something for discussion by the end of June.
Okay, so a draft then by the end of June. Okay. So then perhaps somebody want to make a motion that the board intends to have a draft for the eco toilet demonstration regulations available for public discussion by the end of June?
I'll make that motion.
By June 30?
Second, by June 30. So we have a motion and a second. Anyone in the public like to weigh in on this one? Okay. All right. Any discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, then. Next item on the agenda. We have a proposed conservation restriction, Shearer and Hills to the 300 Committee, 45 Little Nick Barrows Road. Thank you for your patience this evening.
I'm Jessica Rittenhour, administrator with the 300 Committee Land Trust, and I'm here with our president, Leonard Johnson, and Daniel Shear, who owns the property that we're here to present the proposed conservation restriction for. The address is 45 Little Nick Barrows Road. It's located on Black Beach in West Falmouth. I have a site plan here. This plan was prepared by Warwick and Associates, and it shows you the extent of the entire property, which is 10.2 acres. The conservation restriction that's proposed is for 7.2 acres. You can clearly see the line, and that has actually been staked in the ground, so it will be clear on the ground exactly where the conservation restriction area is. It's entirely a vacant section of the property that's dunes. The existing home, driveway, and outbuilding will continue to remain on a three-acre portion of the lot that's not restricted by the conservation restriction. So the effect on the property is limited to the 7.2 acres that the CR would cover. There is a memo that Tricia Favulli prepared that I believe was distributed to you all that outlines the property tax implications for this particular conservation restriction.
Thank you, Jen.
And overall, the existing value of the property is 1.927 million. The estimated value after the conservation restriction is reported would be reduced to $1,912,600. And the tax dollars lost, or the reduction in taxable, in the actual tax bill for the annual would be $128. So that covers the property tax memo from Tricia. Just a few words about this property. It is located within a district of critical planning concern that was designated by the Assembly of Delegates in 1996 under the Cape Cod Commission Act. Because the property has significant dunes, barrier beach, coastal dunes, and the heathland, and it's within that district of critical planning concern designated by the county, and also the Commonwealth has designated this area as Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program. It's high priority habitat for that. We, the 300 Committee, have been working closely with Mr. Shear and with the Buzzards Bay Coalition to craft a conservation restriction for the property. The plan is for the Buzzards Bay Coalition and the 300 Committee to purchase the conservation restriction from Mr. Shear and his sister, who co-host, they have the deed, they share the deed to the property. Our organizations, the conservation organizations, will co-host the conservation restriction, and we will monitor the property in partnership with the Buzzards Bay Coalition in the future to make sure that the conservation values of the parcel are protected. The area to be preserved is known to be unbuildable under the current regulations, and this conservation restriction, we really view as belt and suspenders because this is such a high priority area of town that the conservation restriction itself outlines best management practices. So the conservation organizations can monitor the property, work with the landowner, and make sure that the fragile environment there is protected.
I'll start. I want to thank you for all this information. I'm sure sometime I'll be using it with another piece of property, but it was very, I went through it and explained it very well. But I'm looking at this map as I see that. I think it's the point of ever allowing the public to start to make a path or to try to get into that area. It's obviously seems to be kind of a curious thing, that people are wandering around and they start walking. Is there any way to mark that, or it just kind of flows from what is still the owner's property into the conservation property?
One clarification I should make is that the land will continue to be privately owned, and the landowner will have the right to exclude folks from the property. So in this particular case, with this conservation restriction, the public has not granted any rights. So the landowner may choose to have a footpath that he or she could welcome members of the public to walk across, but it's essentially up to the landowner whether or not they want to allow folks to access the trail. We do have other conservation restrictions where public access is granted as a right to the general public, and that's not the case here.
Okay, I'm going to let someone else ask a question, and I'll come back.
First of all, thank you very much for the assessing. It's my last night, but thank you for putting that together. You know, it's the question I always ask, how much do we lose in tax dollars? I'm sure you had something to do with it too, Leonard. But thank you very much. It's a magnificent piece of property, and if we can, you know, protect it in perpetuity, it's a wonderful, wonderful thing. I thank Mr. Shear and his family for providing that opportunity. That beach is just magnificent. I don't know whether this, I'm sure just walking across in Chapter 91 and the low watermark is accessible, but I think it's a great property.
Any other questions or comments?
No, just a comment. I walk by the property almost every day, and I want to thank Mr. Shear and her sister for creating this conservation restriction and for having it approved. And just to know that that piece will be there in that way for a very, very long time is very good to know, and really many thanks, Dan.
So how do we want to proceed?
I think that the motion would be to approve the conservation restriction as presented.
Second. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Questions from the audience? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the 300 Committee, we thank you.
For those who missed the announcement, the next two items on the agenda relating to the Silver Shores shanty have been withdrawn by the applicant, so they are not going to be addressed this evening. It brings the next item up is a request for a sign variance, Falmouth Catholic Churches, Catholic Charities Drive. They wish to display signs from May 1 through June 24th.
Make a motion to approve?
Motion and a second to approve. Any discussion?
I think the date is interesting, if it's 5/1.
Yes.
I mean, has it started? It would only have 24 days in June and that's what.
It would, if they've already started displaying them, then this may be an after-the-fact approval.
I haven't seen them.
But yeah, I haven't seen them myself, so.
They did put the application in on April 22nd, and so they may have hoped that they were going to get this approved earlier, but I haven't seen them up, so they must be waiting for approval before they're doing it.
Good for them. All right. So we have a motion and a second. Any last questions, comments?
Just to clarify to people out there, this is going to be at a number of different at all the Catholic churches. It's not just at one church.
Yes. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Unanimous. And the next item on the agenda, we have a request for an entertainment license and Sunday entertainment license, Celestinos North, 444 North Falmouth Highway. I do not see the applicant or the applicant's representative, but we do have, that's okay, it's here in the packet. We do have a feedback from Lieutenant Doyle in the Falmouth Police Department indicating that the department has no objection to the request, simply asks that the establishment be considerate of the residences in the area, which I would translate into adhere to the subjects of the provisions of the license and the noise bylaw.
The one thing I was unclear was whether there was going to be amplification or not. In their application, they didn't check or say yes or no. I just thought that might be on the amplification system.
Oh.
It talks about musicians, two to three.
Yeah, live musicians, but there's no indication. How would the board like to proceed?
If it's not there, it's not there. They'd have to come back, I would think, if they wanted amplification, because it's not checked off. Maybe it's kind of, I don't know why they would need amplification. I mean, it's not a huge, big place. I don't know.
Well, it's kind of a strange thing. If you have recorded music, you have to have amplification because you have to have a speaker.
But it doesn't say it's recorded either.
I know, I'm just saying that it's typically assumed, but I don't disagree. I mean, acoustical type of scenario.
Yeah, and even in acoustical scenarios, there's usually a microphone.
Which is amplification.
Yeah, so.
So that really almost should be part of this permit process, but it is what it is. I'm just making the comment.
I think it's a very small area where this entertainment exists, and I really don't think there's any amplification needed. I mean, it's out in that porch area, that entry as you come into it, so I mean, I can't imagine you'd need anything out there. I mean, if you're in eating, you can hear that.
But if they want to use it, I mean, I think we would approve it if they had asked for it. So I would suggest we approve it, because they still have to abide by the anti-nice bylaw in town, making sure they're not heard outside the building, so.
And there was an entertainment license at this location when it was talking to town. And they have amplification, it was two or three people. You know, the microphone.
Yeah.
For fellow singing, that's amplification.
How do we want to proceed?
I would approve with the understanding that they are going to be including amplification, so we will check that on.
Didn't you have to check recorded? No, they didn't check that either.
They didn't check recorded. But Mr. Jones's motion is to approve it with the understanding that amplification is going to be requested. So there's a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Unanimous. All right. And then the next item on the agenda, we have seasonal licenses to approve, and there is one. A motion, please. This is approval for a secondhand dealer, RH Sampson Antiques and Collectibles at 556 Main Street in Falmouth. We have a motion, do we have a second? Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Unanimous. And the next item on the agenda, Board of Select and Liaison Assignment Groupings. This was something that during our last meeting, as you folks know, Mr. Suso, Mr. Jones, and myself have a almost weekly Tuesday meeting to review and assemble agendas, and this was one of the things that came up, that we want to make sure that the board, the next board can hit the ground running, and it has been discussed in the past about grouping liaison assignments such that different committees that have common attributes, if you will, are grouped together, and then the individual selectmen can simply pick from one group to speed and facilitate the process of assigning liaison assignments. So these are recommendations from Mr. Jones, and I'll let you take it from here.
And my thought was to use the knowledge and wisdom of our outgoing board members as to how the committees work, and this might allow us, when we have the new board, to not spend two or three weeks trying to figure out who gets which board, say, in these groupings. I was amazed how well the groupings naturally occurred when I came up the list.
I think it's awesome. I think it's very cut and dry. I do have one suggestion, for continuity purposes, whoever it is, the EDIC is not a liaison, it's a member, and it's part of their charter, so I would take that completely off the list because it's not, I mean, typically, you don't want the chair, you don't, you want continuity, whoever it might be. I know Pat served under that in the past as being a board rep, I have. You don't want the chair, you don't want that changing over, you want someone who's actually going to.
Because the other ones for the chair are by charter. The charter says that the chair needs the liaison to, and I thought that was true for the EDIC, but I wasn't sure.
No, EDIC is actually an appointment, a joint appointment.
No, it's an appointment of the Board of Selectmen.
Board of Selectmen, right. They have one member, otherwise the EDIC votes with the board on every other member they have.
Okay. Okay, well, the same may be true of the Cape Cod Water Protection Collaborative, because that's also a member, not a liaison.
That's right.
Right. You want some continuity, because these things, it takes, some of those take a long time to get up to speed.
So I think we could remove the EDIC, but maybe leave the other one, because it does fit together in that group.
And I'm gonna suggest a swap. The chair committees are to, the liaison for the chair, the group A, these are all elected committees, except the zoning board of appeals. Under buildings, however, we've got the Falmouth Housing Authority, which is actually an elected authority. And my recommendation would be to swap the ZBA and the Falmouth Housing Authority.
I just have a question. What does chair committees mean?
Those are the ones that the liaison is by charter, the chair of the board.
The chair has traditionally been liaison...
You mean, the chairman of the Board of Selectmen?
Yes. Has traditionally been liaison to the other elected boards, which is why I'm making this suggestion that we swap the Falmouth Housing Authority for the ZBA, because the Falmouth Housing Authority is an elected board.
And the Falmouth Housing Authority originally was in group A.
Oh.
But when I saw what group E was, it just seemed to make sense. And so, you know, it could very well go back. That's originally where I had it, because it was traditionally a committee of the chairman of the board.
Well, I'm gonna say, thank you, Doug. I think that was great. I mean, you're right. Looking at it this way makes a lot more sense.
When we had the whole list, it was so hard to conceive that they would come together. I think you did a great job of all this.
I agree.
Any objection to swapping ZBA and the Falmouth Housing Authority?
No.
No.
So I'd make that motion that we approve the liaison groupings with the following corrections. Eliminate the EDIC member, swap the zoning board of appeals with the Falmouth Housing Authority locations, and approve the rest as submitted.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you. All right, then. Individual selectmen's reports, town managers' report. Anybody wanna offer any feedback? Any questions regarding Mr. Suso's report?
I have a couple of comments, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
Whenever the time's appropriate.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of comments from my report. I want to alert the board to a potential safety-related issue involving the public sidewalks in downtown Falmouth. From time to time, one or more merchants occasionally places multiple obstacles in the sidewalk, some in the form of a bench, chair, table, planter, or related structure, and sometimes in the form of a, what we would call a sandwich board sign. We have found that generally speaking, any single such object tends not to be a hazard or obstacle pedestrian, to pedestrians. It is when multiple structures or signs begin to appear at any one single business and sometimes move across much of the pedestrian way that safety issues may arise. Heather and I are working with Building Commissioner Ladio Gore, as well as representatives of the Chamber of Commerce and the Village Merchants Association, in an effort to secure voluntary policing and responsibility to avoid possible pedestrian safety hazards. I, and I know some others, did receive reports, for instance, last summer, and some complaints about obstacles placed in the pedestrian walkway, which, to which were attributed a few accidents to pedestrians. So again, we're hoping by a voluntary process, we can maintain health and safety there and keep our downtown the safe, enjoyable place it is designed and intended to be. So again, I'm guardedly optimistic that this approach will suffice, and I'm asking the board for your approval of this approach to take a voluntary, a voluntary work with the Chamber of Commerce and the Village Association, if the board would so concur. I would be thankful. Don't know if you wish to take a vote on that or not, Mr. Chairman? Just to give us, if you prefer, then we proceed in some other manner. We can do that as well.
Well, this is, it's not on the agenda. I have that reluctance. The other thing is that this is an enforcement issue, and I think it's better suited to your responsibility in the day-to-day operations. I think if the board has any concerns or questions, you can certainly get some guidance from them at this point in time.
I like the path you're taking.
Okay. Karen. Thank you. If it's agreeable, we'll continue. I just want to stress that it's voluntary, and that's our approach, and that's certainly our preference, and we are optimistic that we'll have good cooperation. Again, it's to make certain that our downtown is a safe environment.
Since our last meeting, I had the opportunity to attend the Energy Awards at the State House. The state has an energy award program for all, for students of all schools in the Commonwealth. And I can tell you, the Great Hall was actually filled. I was there because the County AmeriCorps received an energy award, so I went up with them. And actually, the top energy award was given to the senior of Falmouth High School. I can't think of his first name, but his last name is Colton. He is the young man who wanted to go to the prom and didn't have a car, so he made an electric car to get him to the prom. And I can, you've all, we've all met with Secretary Sullivan, so we all know what he's like. He was just beside himself. He couldn't let the person who was in charge of this program even talk about this award. He had to talk about it himself because he thought it was just so incredible. And he was there with a couple of students, I mean, a couple of teachers from the Falmouth High School. So that was one. So I was really so pleased and proud to be there, to know the Falmouth got the top award. Then last Monday, we had the economic summit for Cape Cod, which was probably attended by, I would say, like 500 people. And one of the, one of the panels was, there were about five economists on the panel. And you know, we never get to talk to economists. You know, it's not some, it's not people that you really talk to. And these were from MIT, and they were from Harvard, and Boston University, and so forth. And I think one was from out of the state. But just the way they approached Cape Cod and what it is now, and how they, how they see it, and some of the, some of the factors that we should be thinking about for the future of Cape Cod. Anyway, that part of it was great. And then, at the very end of the day, didn't they have students from Falmouth Lawrence School come and make a presentation on a drone that they built in their class that monitors algae in ponds? And these young people, there were, I think, four of them. One was a girl, and the other three, I think, were boys. But this young boy, couldn't have been more than 13, I don't think. He got up and made this whole presentation as if he were a scientist from MBL or WHOE, and his father probably is, I don't know, because he was just so well-versed. And then they talked about eutrophication. And then someone in the audience, and I think it was a teacher who came with him, asked this young girl, "Well, what is eutrophication?" And she gave this description of eutrophication that I don't think probably any one of us could ever give, without any notes, without anything. She just described the whole process of eutrophication, and why they were doing what they were doing. And it was, I think they're probably in the STEM class. But anyway, it was, the people in the audience were just sort of blown away by this group of young, young people who were doing that kind of work. They did a great job. So I have to tell you, twice in 10 days, I was so proud to be there and see Falmouth honored and be part of these activities that people from all over come to, and they got great publicity. So I just wanted to congratulate the students and the school for what they're doing. That's it.
I want to express my appreciation to Mr. Suso for running the information session on Monday night at our request, but I just thought it really did a great job of giving everyone a chance to ask the questions dealing with, for the homeowners. And I thought it was a very factual, informative evening, and I hope that the public also felt that they got their questions answered.
Mr. Chairman, a couple other, just minor informational items, if I may. Just, I think the board and the public will be interested. Town engineer Peter McConerty has advised me that the Mill Road parking lot construction is anticipated to be completed as of last Friday, and having gone by there, I can certainly confirm that. Peter also is, was meeting on that date with an NSTAR representative to discuss any final punch list items as well. Regarding the Surf Drive drainage reconstruction project, the board will recall that's another of the assortment of projects which we were able to negotiate as part of that Mill Road parking easement, as the board will recall. I'm advised that NSTAR is working with a consultant on the design of the necessary storm drainage construction there, and a filing related to this has been submitted to the Conservation Commission and will be on the CONCOM agenda for their regular meeting this Wednesday, I believe. It's Wednesday of this week. I'm further advised that NSTAR has contracted with Lawrence Lynch Corporation to perform the drainage and paving operations once those permits are received, so we'll stay tuned to that. Also, as the board, I'm sure has observed, work continues to near closure on the roadway resurfacing in Woods Hole. As you will note, this has included the repair of a number of dilapidated sidewalk sections as well. We're very pleased to be able to do that enhancement, following the extension and reconstruction of the gas line throughout that area. Continuing, Rocky Groms and his crew are doing the re-landscaping work at Peg Noonan Park. Sheriff Cummings workforce is also well into their work in rebuilding the performing pavilion at Peg Noonan, as per the specifications laid out by Rocky and discussed here with the board, very near to completion. And as noted, it was my pleasure to serve as facilitator and moderator for that little pond meeting this past Monday. I also was honored to participate in the police department's annual police officer memorial ceremony this past Thursday, along with several members of the Board of Selectmen, at the police memorial in front of the station. This was an inspiring and moving event with a number of persons, in addition to police officers, in attendance. Also wanted to advise the board and the public that, surprisingly, this coming Monday, May 26th is Memorial Day. Town Hall is, and town administrative offices are closed as a result. However, the town's annual Memorial Day observance will go forward, as per usual. That ceremony is set to begin at 10:00 AM sharp in front of the main public library on Main Street. We look forward to that extraordinary observance and working with the veterans' representatives and all those involved in making Memorial Day such a success and inspiration here in Falmouth. Also, I want to thank Chairman Brent Putnam and Kevin Murphy, and past chairman, selectman Chairman Kevin Murphy, for your exemplary service to the residents of Falmouth. It's really been an extraordinary pleasure for me as town manager to have had the opportunity to serve you, and it's, and I thank you for that opportunity. I wish you the best of all things to come, and I look forward to working with both of you in whatever capacity. It would be my pleasure to do so. So thank you again on my behalf, on behalf of all my colleagues that, in the town administration, that have had the pleasure of being serviced to both of you, and we wish you a good evening.
And I would like to thank you both as well for your service to the town, your service on the board. And I can say from the years that both of you have been here that this board has accomplished a great deal under your leadership at times when you have both been chairman, and you will be missed. And we have, we have something to look forward to, which we don't know what it will be until tomorrow, but it was really great having you here, I think, as a board. We did a great deal, and we worked well together. So thank you.
I'm the last one to speak. I heard it's gone right down. I would say that it was a good learning year for me, and to have all of this experience, but none of you had the experience I had sitting in this chair next to Mr. Murphy. I think there was at some point when Mr. Putnam said to me, "Would you like to move down?" I said, "Oh, no." So there was, there were a few little giggles up here. I'll miss that.
Yeah, we should all hold hands. It's a cool...
I think that's true. I think that's true.
I will truly miss this. I really will.
I'm sure you will.
I will. Thank you very much.
Move to a chair?
Second.
Motion and a second to a chair. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
Founder Abraham Penn taught a valuable lesson that has been part of a tradition since 1919, when he said, "I'd rather make a friend than make a sale." For more than 90 years, Puritan has been making friends as a unique, family-owned company right here in Cape Cod. At Puritan Cape Cod on 199 Main Street, as well as Chatham, Mashpee, and Hyannis, you'll find the latest in men's and women's clothing, as well as ski and tennis equipment, and much more. Puritan Cape Cod, 548-0116, or puritancapecod.com. Internet services provided by Cape.com Incorporated. Established in 1994, Cape.com is the only locally owned and operated internet service provider on Cape Cod. Our specialties include e-commerce applications and design, wide-area networking services, and high-speed DSL internet access throughout eastern Massachusetts. Cape.com continues to lead the way with cutting-edge applications, superior networking services, and quality customer support. For more information, visit us at www.cape.com, or call us at 539-9500.